I'm going to call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for a short prayer and a salute to our flag? Almighty God, grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all our residents. May the heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation, and may He watch over and protect our servicemen and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jessica, statement of publication.
Take notice that this regular agenda meeting of the mayor and borough council being held on this 24th day of March, 2025, has been posted and advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975.
Roll call.
Councilpersons: Balka.
Here.
Kalisi.
Yeah.
Novak.
Yeah.
Roberts.
Here.
Sinarski.
Here.
Zabrowski.
Donna, if you would, please. Approval of prior minutes.
I move the following minutes of the mayor and council be approved on roll call vote, subject to correction if necessary, the March 10th, 2025, regular agenda and executive sessions.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons: Roberts.
Yes.
Balka.
I've seen.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Okay, with that, we have a very special guest here tonight. He is a New Jersey state wrestling champ, and it's not the president, but it is the mayor. So, we're going to have a family member come up to take pictures, and then, as I said to the family members, feel free to move around. Matt, come up to the podium.
Are you guys coming out?
She said no. I told you.
What I'm going to do, Matt, just so you know, we're all incredibly proud of you. We really are, and your sister, too. But I'm going to ask our council president, Donna Roberts, who's in charge of all recreation, to read your proclamation. All right? You okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to do the same thing when your sister comes up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Matthew, and we are so very proud of you. This is a certificate of recognition presented by the mayor and borough council to Matthew Brown. Presented today, the Borough Council extends their warmest congratulations to Matthew Brown for his historic achievement as becoming the first New Jersey state youth wrestling champion from Servile. Matthew is an eighth-grade student at the Servile Middle School who has demonstrated exceptional skill, determination, and sportsmanship in the sport of wrestling. His commitment, discipline, resilience serves as an inspiration to fellow students, athletes, and residents of Servile. He competed in the 175-pound weight class, emerging victorious and earning the title of New Jersey State Youth Wrestling Champion, bringing great honor and recognition to our community. Congratulations once again on this remarkable accomplishment, signed by the mayor and council. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You got to walk the gauntlet.
Congratulations. Eighth grade. Don't beat this guy.
Matt, come on back now. Remember, you know, come on up, you know, we get to embarrass you more. Wave to your mother on television.
My mom.
And dad.
Oh, my dad.
Okay. So, can you tell us who your coaches are and what it was like?
Of course.
Face the camera so that your mother will have this forever and ever.
All right, can I go, like, from the start?
You do it the way you want to do it. Cheer, cheer night.
Yeah. So, wow, this is a big achievement. Thank you for having me again. So, for the state tournament, I train at Triumph in Ocean County, and I have a couple coaches there, Coach Nick Roy, Coach Kyle Kiss, and Coach Kenny Fieldball. They really trained me, like, really hard. And then, I would say, in February, I had this coach, Coach Anthony Perfumi. He was with me, like, for, I would say, one or two years, and in the last month, he's really been training me hard. He supported me the whole time, and, like, he's always, like, behind my back. And, uh, yeah. And, um, yeah, so, Coach Anthony Perfumi, he trained me the most, and he coached me, um, during the states, actually. So, it was him and my coach, Coach Kyle Kiss, they both trained me. I did private lessons. I've been working very hard, even in school. It's been really tough also, like, a lot of, um, like, in the past year, I went through, um, like, parents divorcing and stuff, and it's really been hard for me. So, I really had to push through it, and, like, my dad, my mom, my aunt, Dida's, DOJ, my grandma, Mama, I call her, and a couple of my friends, Gavin Rosario especially, he's like a brother to me, they really supported me, and, um, ah, this is emotional, and, like, they really pushed through me, you know, and, like, every single night, almost I would cry. It's really been tough. And the wrestling part, it's been, like, it was okay for me, and in school, right, I would always, like, the teachers, they would support me, too, but sometimes I feel like I would be in the wrong, like, I would always, like, I don't know, it was just very tough emotionally, but, yeah. And then, my coach, Coach Anthony Perfumi, like, like I said before, he really trained me through it all, but, and also mentally, like, I go to a therapist, coach, I mean, not coach, Dr. Brett Holman, like, he really, on the mental side, he really helped me through it. And also, I want to say thank you to my dad. He, um, like, he really paid for, like, the Triumph, he, like, oh my God, he, uh, what else? Like, Triumph, he's been keeping my diet good, I really eat healthy, and, like, he pushed me physically, mentally, and, like, he's really, like, my hero, honestly, and I love him so much. I...
Dad, Mom. Stand in front of the podium. Come on, Dad, come on, come on. Wave, wave, wave to your mom and dad. Wave to the camera. Where's mom? Come on. So, everybody with a camera, go, go in the center aisle, you get a better picture.
And face that one.
And face that one, yes. Beautiful. Matthew, we're very proud of you, and we expect to continue reading great things about you, and your turn is next month. Make sure mom calls. This is Nicole, and this is Jessica, and make sure mom calls so we'll set something up, okay?
All right.
Okay. We're proud of you, man. Job well done. Good job, mom.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you.
Congratulations, mom.
Great job.
George, get Matthew. I want to take a picture of you and dad.
Oh, you want to take a picture of me? Can my son take a picture with you?
Sure. No, me too. Liv, come here.
You want to be in the picture, sweetheart?
I would do one for you.
Have a dad's birthday.
All right. All right. You too, very proud of you.
Thank you. Is it good? My tip.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor.
I'll read it.
You?
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and borough council, the borough of Servile, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, as follows. The public portion of this meeting is hereby adjourned in order that the governing body may meet and close private session for approximately five to 10 minutes to discuss the following matters: attorney-client privilege, litigation, affordable housing. Following the conclusion of said closed session, the governing body shall reconvene the open portion of this public meeting to consider any other matters which may be properly brought before it at this time. The nature and content of the discussion which occurs in closed session shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Your motion?
Make a motion that we go into close.
A second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons: Roberts.
Yes.
Balka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
It should be five or 10 minutes. Counselor. There are motions. Your motion?
Make a motion that we go into close.
A second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons: Roberts.
Yes.
Balka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
It should be five or 10 minutes. Counselor. There are motions.
Make a motion to reconvene.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons: Roberts.
Yes.
Balka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sinarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
It should be five or 10 minutes.
That a fee of $1,200 a day. And while I support this ordinance, I know they're invasive. I understand that. But I'm just wondering, and there's been no discussion on this, so that's why I bring it up now. Do you think a judge might say a fee of $1,200 a day for having a bamboo plant is onerous? And if you do think that, do you think we ought to change that? That's all.
Right. Could happen.
Could happen?
Judges are doing all kinds of things in the last two months, Jim, so this could just be one more thing.
Oh, thank you for that.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on this ordinance? Being no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion, Councilman Zabrowski.
Move the public here and be closed. The ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zabrowski.
Yes.
Balka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
I'm gonna abstain only because I didn't really know anything about this, and then I found out that most of the discussion happened last year, and for some reason it got misplaced and it was never put back on the agenda till now. I think the $1,200 might be a little too high. I'd like to know what other towns are doing with the fees. I'm not against the ordinance in and of itself. That's why I'm gonna abstain right now.
Roberts.
Yes.
Zanarski.
Yes.
Public hearing on ordinance number 11-25, Borough of Saraville County in Middlesex, ordinance updating the borough's regulations for borough-sponsored athletic organizations.
This time, I'm gonna open the public portion for questions or comments on this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion, Council President.
I move the public hearing be closed. The ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Roberts.
Yes.
Balka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Abstain? Oh, I'm sorry. No. Yes.
Yes or abstain?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. Zanarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna make the following appointment. Judy Larmen, I'm gonna change her. She's an alternate on the planning board. I'm gonna change her to class four.
Correct.
All right, since it's a mayoral appointment, it doesn't require any action on behalf of the governing body. New business?
Introduction of ordinance number 12-25, and ordinance supplementing and amending ordinance 2-24, fixing the salaries of certain borough officials, officers, and employees for the years 2025 to 2027.
Councilman Balka?
Move the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, and public hearing be held on 4/14/2025.
Second.
Councilperson Balka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak. Roberts.
Yes.
Zanarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
Introduction of ordinance number 13-25, Borough of Saraville County in Middlesex, ordinance authorizing the borough of Saraville's sale of the real property identified as block 371, lot 2.03, to the adjacent property owner.
Councilman Balka?
Move the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, and public hearing be held on 4/14/2025.
My second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Balka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Zanarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
At this time, I'm gonna open the public portion for questions or comments on the consent agenda resolutions. Other questions or comments? Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Robinson, Parlin. First, I'd like to say I'm glad the power is on here. Also, Mayor, I'm glad you appointed Judy Larmen. She's an excellent alternate. She'll be a great planning board member. Could move on your part on resolution 2588, which talks about a budget for the township of Wykoff. I assume that's another typo or another cut-and-paste error. The way you're looking at one another, I might be the only one that caught that.
It was corrected.
It was corrected.
Okay, well, stop my clock on correcting your errors, please, okay? I wanna also talk about 202587, increasing affordable housing numbers, you know. Fifty years ago this week, the Mount Laurel decision was handed down, and it likes, it looks like we still haven't figured that out. You could have challenged the numbers DCA gave you in October. Instead, in January, with no public discussion, you agreed to a present obligation of 194 units and a prospective need obligation of 210. That's a total of 404 affordable units. About 160 towns did challenge the DCA's allocation, and 85% had their numbers lowered. We didn't. Instead, tonight, with little public explanation, you're increasing our prospective need obligation by 30 to 240 units. That's a total of 434 present and future units. You went into executive session for exactly four minutes to discuss that, and I'd like to know more about this. What you aren't telling the people is the way the mayor has addressed affordable housing has been to build six market rate units for every one affordable unit required. So we're really talking about a potential of 1,500 units on top of the 2,000 being built at Riverdine. So that's a, when you include Camelot and what's by Costa Verde, that's about 4,000 potential new apartments. Now, I'm for affordable housing, but what you're doing provides very few affordable units. It just helps rich developers get richer. It helps certain friends and contributors get approvals without making them replace the thousands of trees they take down. Have you seen what happened, what's happening in Melrose right now? God, it's terrible. Now, I know a little bit about this. I was the planning board chairman during the McCormick administration. That was the last time we were in compliance. We were never sued, and in fact, we had a surplus of units that carried over to the next round. But in the last 25 years, until we were sued, we didn't allow any affordable units. So we were sued, and now we're paying the price. But people should know this. Our affordable numbers are based on the buildable land we have. Had the borough preserved the 40 acres behind Kennedy Park, and we have enough money in our open space fund to do that, had we preserved that, none of that would have gone into the calculations for our affordable obligation. Our numbers would probably be lower. In 2023, Mayors McCormick and Kilpatrick, in a bipartisan fashion, suggested that 40 acres be preserved using open space funds. The council agreed and voted to move ahead and even obtained appraisals. But Mayor O'Brien, who never preserved even one acre of land, had other ideas and stopped the acquisition. Had the mayor not done this, we would have preserved that property, and our affordable obligation might well have been less than it is now. In a borough form of government, remember this, it's the council. That council, not the mayor, who's in charge. But you've surrendered your authority to him, and the council needs to do its duty. Remember this. In 2023, the mayor got 5,270 votes. Last year, Mary Novak got 9,944 votes. 4,700 more votes. Stash, you were right behind her. You got almost as many votes as Mary. Donna and Dan, you got 6,000 votes. All, all of you got more than the mayor. Legally, you're in charge. You can vote to acquire this land, and you should, and it will impact our affordable housing quota. The other thing you haven't talked about is how warehouses impact affordable housing. You haven't told the public how low-wage commercial development raises our affordable requirement, and that, after all, was the basis of Mount Laurel. So you are the folks driving our affordable numbers higher. You had a closed session. Nothing has been discussed with the public. We don't know what's going on. I got an email from somebody today saying, had I not posted about this on Facebook, they wouldn't have known anything about this. You are the, you all got elected, most of you, as the transparency team. This is pretty important. We should know about it. Where's the planner? The planner should be here. Mayor, we had an excellent affordable housing planner that you got rid of for political reasons. The planner should be here to talk about the rationale for doing what we're doing. I'm not saying it's wrong. It might be right. We don't know.
Jim, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate your input.
Always a pleasure.
Now, are there any other questions, comments? Okay, that being said, entertain a motion?
I move the consent agenda items, the public hearing be closed, the ordinance... Sorry, I'm getting myself confused. I move the public hearing be closed and the consent agenda resolutions be approved on roll call vote.
There, roll call?
A second.
A second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Roberts.
Yes.
Balka.
Yep.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
I'm gonna be voting no. I really, I think this is, this doesn't really give any information to the residents of the town. I think perhaps maybe if we had somebody come in.
All right, what are you voting no on?
I'm sorry, on 87.
Okay.
2587.
Okay.
I spent the bill, uh, the, thank God, the, um, the planner spent about an hour and a half on the phone with me on Friday, because most of this was discussed last year when I wasn't on the council. And he was explaining to me, you know, how these numbers come about and how we can change them one way or the other, and it's based on every bit of land in this town that does not have a building of some sort on it. And the, the, even if it's not zoned residential, we might wind up having to rezone this like we did the last time. And the last time, we were trying to make up for 20 years of no affordable housing. But we could wind up having to do the same thing now when we've been following all the rules and regulations. And this, people read, let's say everybody sat down and read the agenda, and said, oh, there isn't anything important on there. I think maybe if it said more here, if we had a presentation prior with the planner explaining this, it would have been a better situation. And, you know, also, I asked several times because I had heard that Riverton was no, I wanted to know how Riverton's reductions in their homes was going to affect this because we would not have even met our obligation for 2025. And I was told repeatedly that they had not dropped their numbers, and yet there's an article in the paper that specifically says that they're no longer building 2,000 units. They are only building 1,300 units. So how that's gonna affect, we're gonna have to make those numbers up too, and nobody really knows any of this. So I'm voting no.
Yes on everything else? Zanarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes, but I do want to comment on 202587. And normally, I kind of reserve myself on this. I'm sorry, I don't think my mic is on. I do want to comment on this because there was a lot of discussion, in particular inside there too. Mary, I guess, kind of changed her tune afterwards, but that's okay. The point being is, we did challenge those numbers. We didn't sit back on our, on our heinies and just wait. We did challenge those numbers, and we did it for a particular reason. Not because the calculations were wrong, because I agree, because we, we challenged the developable properties within town, in particular in acreages. And we were able to do this based on a very valid argument that certain areas simply weren't developable, whether they were encumbered by environmental issues, whether they were in a flood zone, or for some other particular reason. We didn't just sit and take our stand on this. We spent time and considerable time on this. The reason why it couldn't be brought forward before this is because it had to be confidential, because we went through a process of mediation. Mediation is confidential. So this is the first opportunity to be able to raise this information and provide it. We went from a number of 270 down to 240. Would we have liked to have gone lower? Absolutely. And our argument was for lower. But I'll be honest with you, there are a number of towns that are challenging at this point, and they're mediating rather than challenging because that's the better way to go. I don't know exactly how those towns will do, but I do say that we did a very fair job. And I applaud our business administrator. I applaud our municipal attorney, as well as our borough planner, for giving that effort that they did, because it did reduce the numbers. No one wants to be able to have large numbers for affordable housing, but we're working very hard to be creative in the way in which we can do it. And I know that Mr. Robinson said in the, in the past, that you had certain numbers and certain ways of doing it. But round four allows us to be creative, and our township is working that way with our professionals, to be creative, to make those numbers as low and to make, the way in which we do this as best we can for our town. I'm tired of the grandstanding, but that's not appropriate. The fact of the matter is, our town has worked very hard in order to get those, those numbers down for our community. I vote yes on all, on all items.
I need a motion to accept the correspondence that's listed.
I make a motion.
Roll call?
Council.
Absolutely.
Councilperson Roberts.
Yes.
Balka.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Zanarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Okay, council reports. Dan, are you up to it? Okay.
I just, we hope to have a budget change interest at the next meeting and a progress.
Okay, planning and zoning, Councilman Zabrowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. First, on a personal note, I want to congratulate now-chief Patty Konecki of the South Amboy Police Department, as being appointed as their first, actually, the first female chief in Middlesex County, but also being the first female chief in South Amboy as well. She's gonna do a heck of a job over there. For planning board and zoning, I just want to indicate that there are two meetings coming up for the planning board that I think are important. One is the April 2 meeting, which is the subdivision hearing for the Journey Mill Road Urban Renewal Project. And secondly, on the 14th, I'm sorry, the 16th of April, that is a, the next scheduled meeting for the mosque. That meeting will be scheduled at the Adult Act, Active Adult Center at 7:00 PM. Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Public safety, Councilman Kalisi.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin with an update from the police department. So on Tuesday, March 11, at 8:56 in the morning, the Saraville Police Department received an urgent call regarding a fire at the Gallery Motel. Upon arrival, officers encountered thick smoke emanating from one of the rooms, and despite encountering deliberate obstruction at the door, our officers heroically forced entry and discovered a female victim trapped in the bathroom. Thanks to their swift and courageous actions, the victim was rescued without life-threatening injuries. The Saraville Fire Department and JFK EMS promptly arrived at, to extinguish the fire and provide critical care to the victim, who was subsequently transported to St. Barnabas Hospital for further treatment. So during the rescue, one of our officers sustained injuries and was taken to Robert Wood Johnson's University Hospital. We are relieved to report that the officer has been discharged and is now recovering. So following a detailed investigation by Saraville detectives, the female involved in the incident has been charged with arson, assault, criminal mischief, obstruction, and causing widespread injury and damage. She's now in the custody of the Middlesex County Adult Corrections Center. This event serves as a powerful reminder of the risks faced by our first responders daily. We encourage all community members to remain vigilant, promptly report any suspicious activities and report, and support the brave men and women dedicated to ensuring our safety. Then on March 17, which was a Monday, Saraville Police, in partnership with the Middlesex County Special Operations Response Team, executed a search warrant in Saraville, leading to the apprehension of two individuals connected to a series of burglaries. Defendant number one, who is Samit Matthews, 19 years old, of Saraville, faces multiple charges, including two counts of burglary, two counts of theft, one count of possession of a handgun, two counts possession of prohibited weapons involving ammunition and handcuffs, one count of certain persons not to possess a firearm. And then there's even further charges that are expected as the investigation continues. So the second defendant, Keishon Zefrin, 21 years old, also of Saraville, has been charged with one count of receiving stolen property. During the search of Matthews residence, law enforcement recovered a stolen handgun, additional prohibited weapons, and evidence linking both defendants to the prior burglaries. The individuals are now in the custody of the Middlesex County Adult Corrections Center, and additional charges are expected as investigations continue as well. The Saraville Police Department urges all residents to stay alert and report any unusual or suspicious activities to help maintain the safety and security of our neighborhoods. Lastly, our police department reminds residents that applications for the New Jersey Civil Service Commission's Law Enforcement Entry Exam, which is LEAF for short, are open until March 31 of this year. So interested candidates are encouraged to apply online via the Civil Service Commission website. So for more details and the application link, please visit the Saraville Police Department's social media platforms. So the next update on the public safety is from our fire department. Chief Gaverne will be submitting another commendation for two firefighters who were involved in the rescue of the woman that I just previously mentioned from the room at that Gallery Motel on Tuesday, March 11. Their names are Bruce Miller and Jacob Rivera. I'm hoping to present them at our next council meeting, if available. For my report on the Office of Emergency Management, on March 17, Office of Emergency Management, along with Saraville Police, responded to the Born in Town Avenue in the area of William Street to report a train derailment. On their arrival, it was discovered that six rail cars had derailed and damaged the tracks at that crossing. Fortunately, the rail cars were empty, and no one was injured. OEM coordinated with Saraville Police, East Brunswick Police, as well as Conrail and the Norfolk Southern Railway Police. This incident was cleared up later that night. Then on March 20, OEM attended a tabletop drill at the high school for evacuation and reunification with the school administrator, administration, and their security. So I recently attended a meeting at the Office of the Aging, and we had guest speakers from the mayor's chiefs of staff, Ken Kelly and Deacon Andy. They introduced themselves and spoke about the different things they can offer to our community of aging. They have expressed their community involvement and availability to the public in the days ahead. And they will, they will do brief presentations to the various existing senior clubs at their luncheons. And for the public who has interest, there are three major clubs to join at our senior center, which are the Tuesday Club, the Thursday Club, and a St. Stan's Club. So to all those registered, interested in anything to the senior center has to offer, please reach out to 732-390-7058. Finally, I'd like to mention that the Saraville Emergency Squad will be doing a blood drive on Tuesday, April 1, at their, at their garage, from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM. That's at 776 Washington Road in Parlin. So to make an appointment and be a hero, the website is www.nyc.org/drive, and that sponsorship code is 13870. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Public Works, Councilwoman Novak?
Yes. I just received this tonight when I was coming in, that on his way out the door, the governor is officially adopting California Clean Air Standards, which will impact our vehicle purchasing. Even though New York, Delaware, and Connecticut and Pennsylvania have not, New Jersey is gonna do this. So we're gonna have, start having electric garbage trucks and electric...
Mary, I can't hear you, dude.
I'm sorry. I've got my mic on. We're gonna start having to have primarily vehicles over 8,500 pounds. And, I mean, can you imagine having garbage trucks? We'll probably have to double the fleet. So one truck is being charged. We don't even have the infrastructure to do this. I just received this tonight. I'm, I don't care whether the governor's a Democrat or Republican. That's, that's just stupid. You know, we can't, even our windmills don't work right without killing every whale in the state. Other than that, I've had a lot of residents email me about the range. Everybody knows we've had a range there for at least 50 years that I know of, but we're hearing it a lot more. And you say, okay, well, we're using it more often now. This, this is really due to the trees being taken down. The trees, did they, they, people, they took the trees down. They followed all our rules. They gave us money for all of these trees. I, I've talked to the shade tree commissioner, the head of it, and we really would like to see trees and shrubs planted using tree bank money, because they gave us all that money. I don't, and I don't even know exactly how to do it. We probably have to get the engineer involved. But we really need to do this, something people that are a lot smarter than me will know what to plant around that range to stop this. Because it, you know, it is, if I can hear it at my house, it really needs to be done. It's nobody's fault, really. It's just trees naturally inhibit all of this transfer. Like today, it's even more loud when it's a cloudy day and it's rainy. Apparently, that keeps the noise down as opposed to dissipating out. So I'd like, however that has to be handled, I'm sure Glenn, you'll work on that.
Actually, I've been in contact with the, the police chief, and we had a meeting with a acoustic expert who's gonna come out and give us some mitigation ideas and what we can employ out at the range.
And it, you know, again, it shouldn't really come out of our, it can come out of tree bank, because they, they put, what, over a million dollars into the tree bank when they cut all those trees down.
Understood.
So, okay. I've got so many things written here. I only found out recently that we have no list of the streetlights that are out. So my suggestion, I had made a suggestion, I really probably should have put it in the form of a motion, that, because the, the attorney, after a lot of two, three, two and a half months, finally figuring out that, it took a lot of research, that we can, in fact, start not paying for the streetlights that have been out. Now, I made the suggestion, give them 30 days, because it might not just be a bulb, it might be underground wiring or whatever. And I tried to accumulate, let's get together and find out how many streetlights we have out, and when were they first reported being out, only to find out, there is no list. Now, I know years ago, there used to be a list, and it was centralized in Public Works. Now, residents are reporting their own, so we have no list on that. It's coming through, you know, resident complaints, and it's being called into Jersey Central, but there's no centralized list. I keep dumping stuff on you, Glenn, but gotta get together in some way. I know...
It's being addressed. We're gonna be sending out a couple of Public Works employees in the next week or two to do that survey.
Okay.
We did it about, somewhere between a year and 18 months ago, we did have a list that was bulk-reported to Jersey Central. We'll have the follow-up for it.
Okay, because it's, I know years ago, Public Works did it, and then we were paying them too much overtime, and then we had the police doing it on third shift, and that just became cumbersome for them. So we had the auxiliaries actually looking at them when it was dark out, because our Public Works employees don't usually work when it's dark out. And then it was brought to Public Works and a, and it was put together. So thank you very much. Let me see. One thing Councilman Zabrowski said before is that I changed my mind. When this first came up on the agenda, I think it was last month, I abstained with this affordable housing numbers, because I, again, it started last year. I wasn't involved in it. I didn't know a lot. Then this past Thursday, I believe it was, I received a phone call. Apparently, the numbers had gone up or down. I don't even remember. I think they had originally gone, gone down, and then they went up a little bit again, and the judge needed an answer right away, whether we were going to accept it. And so they wanted to know what my vote was gonna be. And I said, well, I'm gonna abstain, because again, I don't know enough. And, oh, no, 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 we need, we need a vote. And I said, well, in that case, my vote is no. So then I spoke to the, the planner, and after talking to him, I was even more of a no, because, I mean, if we had purchased that property, that not only is it right up against our park, but it's designated prime. No housing can go on that property the way it's currently zoned. The way this, I see this going, is since that, those acreages were included in this number, they have a number of affordable housing designated there. And unless we can make that up someplace else, that, the zoning will have to change on that. So after I heard all of that, I was a definite no. was a definite no. So I, I was never in favor of this and publicly, you know, stated it the last time it came up. And I am just, I really wish, I mean, I know, I know, believe me, I know that when things are in litigation, we can't talk about it. But before we're making a formal vote on this, there wasn't even any numbers specified here. How do the residents know what's going on? Perhaps, I mean, I know it'll be too late because we're going to accept this tonight. That's the way the numbers went. But maybe you could bring the planner in.
Number's in the resolution, Mary.
Okay, but the people read the agenda online and there's no numbers there. Okay? And maybe we could bring the planner in, just to explain to the residents exactly how this is going on. Because I, I would like to enlist, I would like to enlist our assemblymen, our two assembly people and our senator to maybe help us. I, I know you can't change City Hall, but this, to me, affordable housing now is nothing more than a handout to the developers. Because they're the only ones that win on this. No matter, no matter what the towns do, we just keep getting stuck. And I explained, I'm on the first aid squad and years ago, years ago, before half of this development was done, there was a car T-boned on Main Street. Took me 20 minutes from the first aid building on Washington Road to get to the accident scene. We can't expand our streets. There's nowhere to go. Affordable housing should be, you know, made to account for this stuff. It shouldn't be, oh, there's a little piece of land here, that's going to be residential and so many have to be affordable. That's not the way to handle it. That's not safe for the residents in this town. If we ever had to evacuate this town, half of the people would probably die because you can't get out of this town. There's no, it's not that people don't get out of your way in the ambulance. They try their best. There's nowhere to go when the town gets tied up like that. And I, if we could, you know, get our assembly people and everything on our side, maybe if we did a resolution and we, we sent it to other towns to get other towns, we've done that so many times on other things. Maybe if we could get, you know, other towns to join in on this, maybe something would be done. And I know I feel like Don Quixote tilting at windmills, but, you know, it's just, and also, maybe we could get them to get involved in helping us with JCPN. Because in four days, we've had two blackouts. And they were supposed to be here tonight. I understand the person was sick, couldn't come. I understand that.
I was just notified the power's back on.
Well, okay, the power's back on. The point is, is it's going out all the time. And guess where all of the trucks were when I came to the meeting? They were all down there at that portable station that's been there for almost a year. And yet, in their note to us, it said, none of this stuff has anything to do with that. I find it hard to believe. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Water, Sewer, Environmental, Councilman Zanarsky.
Thank you, Mayor. The first one I want to talk about is, I did make the appointment with the superintendent of Water and Sewer. And starting next Wednesday, coming up, I'm going to be making my tours. I'm going to start at DuHernol and learn about the wells and the fields and the pumps and everything there. The next thing is our, next Monday is the environmental, not the environmental, it's the meeting for the community garden. I really don't know how many are left, but I will find out one day because they had to open house after our last meeting. So I don't know how many they have right now. The environmental meeting is also on Tuesday. Other than that, progress.
Thank you. Recreation Council President Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get into any of the fun recreation items, I agree with affordable housing is a problem. And we are up against, as a municipality, we are up against so many forces that are mandating what we do. So I'm making a motion that we oppose Senate Bill 1408. It is according to the New Jersey League of Municipalities, also known as the stranded asset rule, it is an unnecessary and unwarranted preemption of local planning. So they want to take more of our planning away from us. In the New Jersey League of Municipalities statement, they noted that any such application can be made through our existing redevelopment process. And further, the New Jersey League of Municipalities noted that the criteria in the bill is ripe for litigation and expressed concern that this could turn into a backdoor means to challenge a town's approved affordable housing and expose the municipality to litigation. So we have it coming from every direction. And I'm looking for a second to oppose Senate Bill 1408 as well as the accompanying Assembly Companion bill that's anticipated, A2757.
Your motion, their second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call.
Councilperson's Roberts.
Yes.
Falca.
What question? This is, League of Municipalities recommended this action?
Yes.
Yes.
Polisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Zanarsky.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
We can have a reso for them next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Council President?
Yes, thank you for, for passing that, first of all. And I do want to announce what I had done as part of my community outreach as a councilperson has been pre-council meetings, which have gone on for nearly five years. And I think they've run their path, but I do want to continue community outreach. So I have established office hours. The first ones will be here on this Wednesday from 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock. We'll talk about what's on your mind, the questions. If you can email me questions in advance, I have a better chance of getting you answers at that point in time. So I encourage that. And this way we can have an open discussion about what's on people's minds versus what's on our agendas and how we can all work together to achieve our goals. So I hope that those of you who are here will take advantage of that as well as contacting any of the council people through our emails and phones. We're, we are here to serve you. I also wanted to mention that Cultural Arts is having a meeting here also on Wednesday. It's been advertised. It's an extra meeting. So we've got a couple of things going on Wednesday if you wanted to come by. And I do want to let everyone know Memorial Tree Plantings on April 12th, there will be one for Christian Rivera, who was the child who was deceased behind the Saraval War Memorial High School. There will be a planting near the Parks Department Building. That would be a cherry blossom tree. And there will also be a planting for Frank Bella at Veterans Park, and that will be a red maple. We're looking forward to having JCPN here, but at least the power is back on. And I will be attending a climate change advisory tomorrow at the Saraval High School via remote. And a couple of other things going on include, and I'm hoping we can have a community calendar that we've been talking about. I know that's something that's out there. But April 25th, there is a gift card bingo trick or tray fundraiser, tricky tray fundraiser at St. Stan's. And April 26th, the First Presbyterian Church Flea Market is going to occur. So want to get a good community calendar for all the events that go on in town. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President.
Donna, I just, the Easter egg hunt is before the two tree plantings on the same day.
Thank you. Okay. I think, I think I said the Easter egg hunt last meeting. I just took it off my list. Yes.
Free savings that morning.
Yeah.
General discussions and agenda items, Glenn.
To award a non-fair and open contract to top security lockments for the installation of security doors on the Burks Park bathrooms in an amount not to exceed 19,000.
Any objection? Next item.
Application for special event received from Head Over Heels to conduct a community day on April 13th on their property located at 287 Cheesecake Road.
Any objection? Next item, Glenn.
Thank you, Mayor. Authorization to call for a certified list for patrolmen from the Department of Personnel.
Any objection? Okay. CFO's report, Danielle.
Mayor, progress.
Thank you. Borough Engineers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing on my agenda, but Mayor, you wanted me to talk about an issue that someone raised concerning the consumer confidence reports that were submitted to residents.
Go ahead, Jay.
I think there was a question about the lithium quantities that were in that report. I spoke with Dave Leitner, your Water and Sewer Director. He's your licensed operator. He indicated that that is not currently a regulated contaminant. The state, by the Safe Drinking Water Act, there's certain unregulated contaminants that they want you to monitor so they can gather data in order to, in the future, develop regulations for that lithium quantity. At the present time, there are none. You're not in non-compliance. So there's no health and safety issues from the borough standpoint with those numbers. He indicated that if anyone has any specific questions, give him a call and also there's information available on the Water Department website.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Borough Attorney?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, we're going to open the public portion for questions or comments on any and all issues. Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Robinson, Parlin. Mayor, when, in response to Mary's comment about the numbers for the affordable housing, you said, well, they were in the resolution. Public could see them. First of all, those resolutions weren't out to the public until Friday evening. And second of all, I pointed out the second typo where we used a different town, Wyckoff, second typo this year. You folks don't even read the resolutions. So to suggest that the public should, come on. And I will point out this, if you go to the borough website and you look at affordable housing, it has the January numbers there. That wasn't even updated. So let's get real, Kennedy, okay? Now, I want to talk about, and I'm sorry Tina can't be here, I do want to talk about, and especially tonight when 23, I'm glad those folks are back, or at least some of them, most of them are back, the 2,300 folks that are out. But on the agenda under correspondence is a notice of a public hearing to be held before the BPU on March 31st for JCPN's verified petition for approval of an infrastructure investment program. That's to increase rates for infrastructure improvement. I'm sorry Tina's not here, but let me ask this question of the mayor and council, the administrator. Have we inquired if any of these expenditures will help Saraval and how? Are we taking a position on this action and these investments? We've had outage after outage after outage. And I would hope we would have a position on this. Can anybody tell me about this? It's on our agenda. It's before the BPU. Are we sending anybody? Are we going to comment?
Go ahead, Glenn.
Nothing?
I've not reviewed the correspondence yet. I just became aware of it.
Well, why, why do you think they notify us? So that they can be received and filed? They notify us so that if we have concerns like outage after outage after outage after outage, or streetlights being out for a year and a half, that we can go to the hearing and address those. That's why you folks are elected. This public hearing is an opportunity to represent the borough and have the problems that the, and, and voice the problems that the people of the town are having. That's why they send us to you. That's why they send it to you. I'm disappointed, not surprised, but disappointed. Okay? You should be up there fighting for us. The other thing I want to go back to is what I said earlier, the borough form of government is a weak mayor, strong council form of government. You folks, the council, have an obligation to know this and to do your jobs. I understand the mayor has a secret $90,000 dark money slush fund that his chief of staff chairs that he uses to fund your campaign. So you have to keep him happy. I understand that. But according to the law, it's the council that governs. The council is the legislative branch. It's their job to govern. I'm pretty familiar with the statute. It's 40860. I'm sure you are all two, but I reviewed it again today. Nowhere does it say the council's job is to say, yes, Mayor, yes, Mayor, yes, Mayor, whatever you'd like, Mayor. But that's what you do. Well, sorry, Dan, I didn't mean, I didn't mean you. But you're an example of what happens when you don't say, yes, Mayor, anything you want, Mayor. Last year, Christian found out what happens when you do that. The council, and by the way, the council and the people are going to miss your independent thinking, Dan. You've got eight months left, and I hope in those eight months, you will teach this governing body what a council is supposed to do. It's supposed to legislate. Now, the mayor is the executive, so it's his job to ensure that what the council enacts is executed. So when the council votes to buy open space, as it did in 2023, it's the mayor's job to ensure that happens. That's the law. That's the law. The council legislates and you voted to do that. Under the law, the mayor is supposed to prepare the budget that the council votes on. Needs to be adopted by March 31st, but instead, what did we do? We passed a resolution with the town of Wyckoff in there instead of Saraval, giving him extra time. That's the mayor's job. Mayor, you're supposed to have a budget. I would note in South Amboy, they introduced and adopted their budget, where Dan is the CFO, by the way, and everybody's getting a big tax break. I hope, Mayor, when you present your budget to the council, which should have been done by now, we'll get an even bigger tax break. Where are, where are we on the budget that you're supposed to present, Mayor?
Go ahead, Glenn. Go ahead, Danielle.
We hope to be able to introduce at the next meeting.
The next meeting? So that it'll be introduced at the April, April meeting. It won't be adopted in March.
Jim, you got to wrap it up.
Good job, Mayor. Thank you.
Jim, as always, your, your motions are in the record.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure.
Bob? Oh, wait a minute, Bob. That young lady there had her hand raised before you.
My name is Dorine Fraga, Saddle Brook, New Jersey. I'm with Animal, we're with Animal Protection League of New Jersey. And it was brought to our attention, 42 geese were rounded up on the property of Sayerville during the multi-period in 2024, when geese are flightless and were gassed to death. Sarerville has a shared service contract with Middlesex County and the USDA, allowing the USDA access to Sarerville properties to kill the geese. I wrote to the mayor and council. I did forward FOIA reports. And we were hoping to work with Sarerville and ask them to cancel the shared service contract with Middlesex County and the USDA, and cancel all lethal roundups and work with Animal Protection League. The properties that were involved were Buchanan, 24 geese were gassed, Kennedy Park, 14 geese were gassed, Major Drive, four geese were gassed. So that was 42 geese in total that were gassed to death. And a few years back, I attended a virtual meeting and at the time, Mayor Kilpatrick, she was the mayor, and she stopped all lethal roundups with Middlesex County and the USDA. So we were hoping that, that you would work with us. There are many, many non-lethal solutions. There's a few that if you wanted to name.
Yes, my name is Valerie and I'm also with Animal Protection League, to name a few. There's a no feeding ban should be implemented, a habitat modification, which the number one solution for permanently deterring geese, overseeding with flight turf. The grass has burbs on it and will, will bother the geese mouth when they try to eat the geese, excuse me, try to eat the grass. Plus will upset their stomachs. There's, there's more. There's the hawk kite, which is very effective, attaching the tail to the tail of the hawk with streamers and mylar strips is very effective. Flags, predator cutouts and attaching a plastic bag. These are all ways that would help. We'd like to do a site visit. We'd like for this to be considered. And, you know, as you could tell, we definitely do not want geese or any animals to be killed.
Your timing couldn't be better. Two weeks ago, there was Read Across America and I was down in Arles School. About 20 years ago, I was down in Arles School for, in those days, they called it Dr. Seuss Day. And we had, we have a problem with geese. And, you know, Sarerville is one of the stopovers for migrating fowl. And so there are issues. And I asked all the kids, I deputized all the kids in the class, as I did 20 years ago, and I asked them for solutions. And I have two people in Borough Hall, Elise, yeah, Elise Barone and Rebecca Garbusky, who are going to work with the kids. If you leave your information with, with the clerk's office, I will include you in it. Now, as I said to everybody, for me, the health of a child comes first and foremost. Now, as I said to everybody, for me, the health of a child, it comes first and foremost. So they have the oppo, now, over the years, we have tried probably many of the solutions that, that, that you have. But I have, I have, I have informed everybody, I'm giving you the opportunity for humane solutions. But I'm, I'm a father, I'm a grandfather, and the health of a child comes before a goose to me. I, I'm not, I certainly don't hate animals. I grew up with every imaginable pet, and they all slept in the bed except for the reptiles. And, and I'm looking for a solution for this. But we do have a goose problem, and one of the problems is people feed the geese. So we've had dogs, we've had egg adoling, we've had a number of things. So I'm always looking for solutions, and I'll include you in the process. And, and I'd be actually very pleased, it'll be very helpful to the kids who, who are really putting, putting their all into researching this, and I know Elise and Rebecca would most certainly welcome you aboard.
I do have a packet of information.
If you'd give it to Nicole, and we'll give it, how many copies are in there? One?
One copy, but I have some information.
Do you have it digitally, dear?
I have our brochure. My part is in there, and then I have here all of the links to everything that's in this.
Okay, okay.
And I just wanted to add one thing. We work with an ecological landscape coordinator. She designs this kind of riparian buffer, which is the number one solution to the carabines around the lakes and ponds and.
Well, I told, I told Arla School, which is an elementary school, and what I found was, when someone's a little bit taller than your kneecap, they, they have a different perspective on life and they see things differently. And I have always gone to the kids for solutions, because they just, they, they don't have a filter, and they usually give me excellent solutions. I've been doing that for several decades. So I will include you in the process and the project, and I always look for the humane way first. But again, I'm, I'm a father and a grandfather, and, and the health of, of a child always comes first for me.
Is there a contract that I could follow up with as well?
With?
For this program?
Here in the Borough Hall? Sure. I'll have Nicole send you Elise and Rebecca's contact information.
So I guess what my last question would be, so the shared.
Can you speak, because we're going to miss you on the recording.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the shared service agreement that you have with Middlesex County, is that still active, or is that?
Well, we're supposed to have results in, in about five weeks, six weeks. So I'll have the BA check, check that agreement, and we'll see where we are on it.
Because we would like for you to cancel the lethal portion of that contract, because I witnessed a goose roundup. I saw what happens.
We've been having them here for years.
When they're gassed to death, and it's, it's horrific.
I, I just need you to understand, I, I'm the opposite of hating animals, hating pets. But before I allow a kid to go to a playing field that's, that's loaded with goose droppings, I, I will gas them. Because no kid should, no, because a kid will touch it, and then they put their, it just spreads disease, and I won't have that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one other thing. Edgewater is right on the Hudson, and they had.
Edgewater's across the river from us.
Right, and they had a goose problem, and they've been non-lethal now since 2016. I included his contact information. They have done wonderful things. They had all the poop issue and, and all that kind of thing. They ended up buying a poop machine.
We have that.
And they've done.
The kids recommended that 20 years ago, and we bought it. We still have it, we still use it.
I can't wait to meet these kids.
They're, well, it's a new generation, but they're, they're committed. And like I said, I get wonderful ideas and solutions from them, so welcome aboard.
Okay, maybe we could recruit them.
Start them young.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Bob, is Bob here, or he leave? Oh, Bob, there you are.
I could have left because the power's back on in my house.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Bobby against Saraval. Just a couple things. The meeting for this Jersey Central, where's that going to be held? The BPU meeting?
It's not a meeting, the, the, just the representative will be here. We ask that you submit your questions before it.
BPU. He's talking about what's up.
Oh, the BPU or?
Yeah, BPU.
Oh, Glenn.
Because there's no address there.
I became aware of it tonight. I've not yet seen the letter. I will review it tomorrow. I, I don't know yet.
Okay, somebody will get a hold of you, Bob, and let you know.
And as far as this, you know, these power outages, and they're talking about infrastructure, they spent a ton of money on these smart meters, I'm sure. How come they didn't spend that money to fix our problem? You know, that's one thing. And another thing, I have, since I'm a few months shy of 70, I had other things to do, so I didn't come to some of the meetings. But a few meetings ago, Councilman Sinorski, when Councilman Novak brought up making the firehouse a historical site in our town, he said it was too early. I don't know if you can comment on why it's too early? I would think the sooner you can apply for grants to get money, the better. So I don't know, why is it too early to, to make it a site?
Hold on, Bob. We got an answer for it.
Despite the assertions of people to the contrary, we did our research through the grant writer, there is a minimal amount of grants that are available for historic preservation. The vast majority of that money goes to places of higher significance than our original town hall. If we're to wait for grants, it will delay the project years, because it comes in increments of 15, 25, $50,000. We have the ability under the current Open Space Fund to do historical preservation. We have the money in the account, and it's going to be leveraged to get that building completed. We're currently working with the architect and the planning, after which we'll be in a position to go out to bid in short order to take care of the environmental problems in the building, and then the building reconstruction can begin. The architect's been instructed to make sure that it's preserved, but, but from a historical perspective, and that is what the outcome of that will be once the job is completed.
Wait, the thing is, why can't you apply anyway? If you get money, you get money.
Well, because it costs money to apply for grant. We have to pay the grant writer to do that, and it takes an exponential amount of time for a minimum of money. So essentially, it's a decision based on return of investment. We have the funding here available to move forward. Why would we delay the project when clearly the voters have spoken by a two to one majority they wanted the building preserved? We can act on it and get it done.
Okay, good enough. And then as far as the, the range, now, if it's going to cost Saraval a substantial amount of money to create a buffer to knock down the noise, so that people, when they're sitting in their houses during the summer in warm months and have to listen to it, it sounded like a good old boy demonstration today. It didn't sound like a controlled range to me. And I would say, I don't know how many the police forces come, I'm great, you know, I support police, believe me, but if it's going to cost us a ton of money, either they split the money, or I'm sure Fort Dix has plenty of available ranges.
Okay, so what's going on with the range currently? There isn't uptick in, there isn't uptick in activity. Our police department transitioned to new weapons, which requires a full day of training for each of our almost 90 officers, which is why there's been an upgrade in activity. As I explained to Councilwoman Novak earlier, we have engaged, we're engaging with an acoustic specialist to determine what the best sound mitigation strategies are, and in the money that we've garnered over the last several years, having the Port Authority visit us periodically, we will use that money to do whatever mitigation needs to be done, and it will not have to come out of the general fund.
Great, as long as it works, and it's not our money. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Yes, ma'am. I can't hear you. You have to come closer and speak in the mic.
Hi, my name is Leela Bynum, live in Sarerville. I came to understand about, I've been living here for about four years now, and electricity is going out more and more frequently, and I'm not really sure if it's like an infrastructure issue. I'm not sure what's happening. Before, when I first came here, it was like maybe a couple times a year, and now frequently, we lost electricity again a little while ago, which is why I came here to understand what's, what's happening.
That was one of the questions we were going to ask the representative tonight. I, we, we have asked that question before. It's best when the representative comes. We, we've been told it's not a capacity issue. They, they don't quite clarify exactly what it is, but they have stated it's not capacity. I know that's the first thing that, that comes to mind. I think it's more about infrastructure.
When I've called them, they also are not clear of the answer, like.
Yeah. Well, they're consistent, and the 25, 26 years I've been up here, it's pretty consistent answer. So when we, if you would leave your information with Nicole or Jessica, as soon as I get some, I'll have it sent to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments? Not being any, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to close public?
Second?
Second.
Local?
Aye.
Favor?
Make a motion to close?
Wait a minute, not yet. Hold on. Thank you, young lady. What's the number? Oh. Oh, well, more on YouTube. Must have been the power. Okay, tonight's number, Zoom, which is the Borough Portal, were 12, five of them were employees, YouTube was 22. Okay, a couple things. As I said, you know, a lot of, a lot of what goes on is, is personal here, personal attacks. When I came back, I, I did a podcast with Mayor McCormick in Woodbridge, which is a town twice our size, twice our population, and I specifically asked Mayor McCormick how he was dealing with the streetlight outage. It's just a common thing throughout New Jersey. And he said, he has seniors that have volunteered. What, what you have to do is find a pole where the bulb is out, and every pole has a serial number on it, and, and you write it down and, and you report it. So I know that the Councilman Calacy has taken it upon himself, and I know Mr. Robinson, who's a senior, has, has done some work here. It all helps. It's not the ultimate solution, but it's the most cost favorable solution for us. That being said, affordable housing. When I became mayor, you inherit, you inherit certain housing projects, you create certain housing projects. Sarerville, in my opinion, has really been discovered on the map, and it's the location, my understanding is, the population in New Jersey is moving south of Raritan River, the jobs are north, and so we're, we're, we're just a very convenient location, why many of us work, moved here. But that being said, in my mayor's office, the number one most difficult issue to deal with is finding people affordable housing. And, and the super number one problem is single mothers with children. To find them an affordable place to live is a very, very difficult task. So it used to be, if we put in affordable housing, we could make the stipulation for Sarerville residents only. You are no longer allowed by law to make that restriction. Public, affordable housing is for everyone. That is the law. Am I correct, Counselor?
You are correct, Mayor.
Okay. So that being said, particularly now with, with the price of housing in Sarerville, you know, people keep saying that several years ago, under Mayor Kilpatrick, they had this 40 acres in Sarerville Park appraised. That's the first process. It was appraised for $650,000. And as I said at the last minute, on North Edward, they just sold a Cape Cod house for $630,000. The property valued at Riverton is valued at $1 million an acre. The property on Journey Mill Road, where they're building those warehouses, is half a million dollars an acre. So to, to say that, that we can pick up that property for $650,000 is really a bold-faced lie. It, it's not even misinformation, it's just a bold-faced lie. That being said, the same people that are promoting that, I, I remember when the Ernston Road connection from Washington Road to Main Street was going through, I received numerous phone calls to stop it. When Patriot Hills development went in, I received phone calls to stop it. You can, it's the right of the property owner. It's the right, it's, it's what the country was founded on. I wish I had a different answer, but that is the legal answer. The, the development going on up behind Costa Verde and Melrose, that was approved in the last administration, and I'm not, I'm not throwing the blame around, but it was.
When that was approved, Mike Kennedy? You were the mayor when that was approved?
When it was approved on the planning board. That was, that was a deal where National led own that property, and they had to go, I don't know, it was a conditional sale. I was out of it by the time that went through. So that being said, you inherit stuff, you create stuff, it's part of progress. So the, the average cost of a house in Sarerville now is an easy half a million dollars, half a million to a million. We've had several houses sell for a million dollars. So the Sarerville that I came to long ago is a lot different than the Sarerville is today. It's, it's gaining in influence, and as I said, sitting up here, we're managing a service business. We're here to provide the police fire and first aid, pick up the trash. We have 600 roads that we need to take care of. We supply water to, slash, I'm going to say 13, 14,000 residents, homes. Jay, do you know the number?
16, 17,000.
16, 17,000. These are the things that we're in charge of, of making sure that we can deliver the services. You know, in New Jersey, when I came to New Jersey in 1958, one of the memories, and I was four years old, so I'll be 72 this year, was, in those days, hunters wore those red and black check jackets, and there were these hunters walking down Main Street with a, with a, with shotguns over their arms. It was just the way it was, you know? It was accepted. So we're, we're dealing with progress, and, and you can fight all you want, but this is now part of the legislation, and that's one of the questions we ask our attorney, who's a top-flight land use attorney, along with municipal. And if, if for whatever reason, these hundred odd towns, and there's, what, 560 towns in the state, if they're successful in reversing this legislation, we win. We just didn't have to spend any money. If, if they're not able to reverse this legislation, we're where we were in the beginning. Do you want to give a report on your meetings with the judges?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think it's important that the, the public understands how the process actually works. This process for the fourth round affordable housing is statutorily established. It's a new process that was established by an amendment to the Fair, the Fair Housing Act in March of last year, oh, about a year ago. And what, how it works is, in October, the DCA established a number for a regional need based on a state need of affordable housing, and established methodology for determining the allocation of that need to each municipality after allocating it to each individual region. Middlesex County's in Region 3, so that is the, that is the region we have to deal with. And in doing so, that, their report was non-binding on municipalities. What the, the legislation did was actually put it on the municipalities to make their own determination as to what their affordable housing obligation is, but the caveat is, you have to follow the exact formula that's set forth in the statute. So when we got the, meaning the borough got the DCA report in October, the planner, myself, members of the governing body and, and staff reviewed that in detail and looked at where in the DCA report, if it was correct, or whether. at where in the DCA report, if it was correct, or whether there was errors in there, because that DCA report provided an perspective, meaning what you need to accomplish in the fourth round, obligation of 170 units. So in doing so, we found that there were some errors. There were some errors with regard to the developable land that they calculated for the Borough. And we then recalculated it based upon those numbers, and in compliance with the statute, adopted a resolution on or before January 31st, setting forth what our obligation is. And that, we determined, was 210 units. So we reduced it from what the DCA had determined when we adopted our resolution in January. The courts then established a program, an alternate dispute program through the Superior Court, that you had to file an action, a declaratory judgment complaint, putting forth your resolution and asking the courts to confirm it, and getting a judgment in order to confirm it. And in doing so, also, this is all in compliance with the statute, the statute then set forth a period of time where any objector can file objections to how you calculated that number. In Saraval, we received two objections, one from the Fair Housing, Fair Share Housing Center, and from the New Jersey Builders Association. Both of them were objecting to our number. Fair Share provided their own calculation, which then ended up being approximately the same as the DCA's calculation, saying that we really needed to provide an obligation of 270 units. The Builders Association basically said, no municipality should be able to change the DCA numbers, you had to accept those DCA numbers. So as part of this program, we had to go through a vigorous, very, very short time period settlement conference with the program judge, which is a retired affordable housing judge from the prior round, along with special masters, and engage in, by law, by statute, you had to engage in the settlement with good faith to try to come up with a resolution for it. Then after that, you go into what they call a session. If you can't settle, you go into a session, which is essentially a hearing before the program judge, and then the program takes the results of that session, brings it to a recommendation to an affordable housing judge at the Superior Court, and they make a final determination as to what the rulings are. During our process for Saraval, we actually were working very well with Fair Share, and they actually agreed with all of our acreage that we determined was developable, that and agreed that DCA was wrong with. The only difference was, was how they calculated, the methodology they calculated, the math they used versus what we did. And we worked and negotiated very hard with them, and were able to come to a settlement of 240 units versus the 270 that they originally were trying to push upon us, the Builders Association was forcing upon us, and what the DCA came to. And so that is what was authorized in this resolution this evening, is a settlement whereby we're agreeing to a prospective need obligation of 240 units. And that is what now, the next step we have to do pursuant to the statute, is now planned for that. That doesn't necessarily mean that every one of those units is gonna be built, doesn't mean that we're gonna have 240 new affordable housing units being developed. We're going to look, plan, and come up with creative ways to address that need through bonus credits, through all different types of mechanisms, that that's what our next step in the process is. And we're going to then, by, the deadline is the end of June, have to adopt a new fair share plan that identifies how we're going to address those. So there will be more action for this governing body, as well as the planning board, coming up in the very future. But it is something that the, I believe, the Borough, and in my opinion, and being involved with numerous municipalities doing through this process, as well as my offices, and I've been in constant contact with other attorneys who represent other municipalities through this content, through this process, and I truly, it's my recommendation that this is a good outcome on behalf of the municipality, this settlement number, and I think it's going to be in the Borough's best interest that it did adopt this resolution.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, and with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, everyone.